We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Amy, if you would do the roll call, please.
Gookin?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
English?
Here.
Let's rise for the invocation. We have Pace Hartfield with us from One Place Church.
Could you pray with me? Father in heaven, thank you for this day. Thank you that in you we have a God who is close and not far. You're not a distant deity, and in fact, you are here in this presence. We recognize your presence now, your power and your authority. We pray your blessings over this agenda. Thank you for our city officials and how they serve our city. I pray that in this time, you would give us wisdom and give us discernment and give us the ability to give great detail and thought in those areas that we should and the ability to also be decisive in the places that we should. We thank you for this time. We recognize you are here, and we pray this in your son's name. Amen.
What do you believe this in the pledge, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight, so we will move on to the consent calendar. Who has the duties tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for a passage of the consent calendar, including Resolution 16048. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now is the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. Anyone that wishes to address the council on city business will have three minutes to do so. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Quiet group here so far tonight. I have some appointments. I would like to appoint to the Ped Bike Committee Denise Jeska, Mike Fuller, and Tom Morgan, and to the Library Board Kathleen Saylor. So I'd be looking for council action.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will move on to General Services. We have Resolution Number 16-049, Agreement with the Forest Service for Reciprocal Access and Two Easements Between the United States and the City for Public Parking and Access. That sounds so official. So Hillary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yes, before you is this reciprocal access agreement that has been worked on long and hard by Randy Adams of the city and U.S. Forest Service. And we had this for you a few weeks ago. It had gone before General Services on August 22nd. There was a few questions last time. It was before you regarding potential impacts on the neighbors associated with lighting, as well as if there was going to be any use within the 80-foot buffer. And so the staff report before you addresses all of those items. I believe it has the information needed. The Forest Service has hosted not only one but two planting parties. The staff report only mentioned the one. I guess the second one is coming up on the 24th of September, so they haven't had it yet. Wanted to see if there was any questions. Otherwise, asking for action on this.
Okay. Questions for Hillary?
I just had a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Dan.
Thank you. And this is more for Randy, I guess, but, and it's just a general question, but this is a typical U.S. government contract. It seems very one-sided. And we know whose side it is. But, I mean, it just, I mean, if I look through all this stuff, it's like, you know, they can pretty much do anything, and we just have to, I mean, so they can go ahead and pull this out at any time, and we still give them their easement?
Well, they are, because it's reciprocal, so we're granting them the access so they can have their entrance into their project, and then they're granting us an easement so we can have our trailhead parking lot. And so they're more needing, I think, the access than we are, but it is reciprocal. So I think we both, both parties felt like we're covered under this disagreement.
It just had a lot of stuff in there, so they can use the parking lot, too, and it's not really exclusive. I mean, I don't object to it. It just seems like there's just a lot of hair on the ball, so.
Any other questions for Hillary?
Hair on the bone?
Ball. You know, like tennis balls, hairy. Slows it down.
Hair on the ball, okay. Sorry.
Ah, it's gonna be a long night.
Sorry.
So we're looking for council action.
Oh, hell. I'll move that we approve Resolution 16049, which is an agreement with the Forest Service, U.S. government, for reciprocal access and two easements between the United States and the city for public parking and access.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Hillary. We will move on to Resolution Number 16-050, Renewal and Approval of Amendment to the 2016-17 Policy with ICRIP for Insurance Coverage. And Troy has a report for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring forward to you the proposed renewal with Idaho County's Risk Management Program. We have been with them for a few years now, and I would say the customer service has been excellent. Unfortunately, we're also using this insurance, including the windstorm, and their payments have been right on, and staff totally supports this program. In this motion tonight, we're also asking you to reject the offer of terrorism coverage. We have typically always, always done this. The premium would be approximately $174,490 additional dollars. That is not in our financial plan. But to the credit of ICRIP and the board that oversees that, they have taken into consideration that terrorism in the state of Idaho is a possibility. So they have, in the existing policy, $5 million in, actually more than that, in aggregate, that in the event that there was a terrorism act across the whole state, that would be the first dollars that would be used. So we have some coverage in the event of a bad event if we were the first one in. So I would entertain any questions you may have in regards to this.
Questions for Troy?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 16050, Renewal and Approval of Amendment to 2016-17 Policy with ICRIP for Insurance Coverage for Liability and Property Damage and Reject the Terrorism Coverage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Troy. Next, we have Council Bill Number 16-1020, Amendments to the Parking Commission Appeals, Municipal Code 1027050, entitled Appeal to Change from the Parking Commission to the City Administrator to Determine Parking Ticket Appeals. Sam Taylor has the duties tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will work to keep this as brief as possible, but this has been a long road and journey regarding parking ticket appeals. Prior to 2005, parking ticket appeals were undertaken by the city staff. And due to personnel changes and time and some thought that we wanted to wrest control of that away from staff and put it with the Parking Commission, we created at the time, actually, a full Parking Commission or Parking Ticket Appeals Board. So we actually had a group of the Parking Commissioners who would meet on a monthly basis to review all of the appeals as a group and determine if they were founded or unfounded. Very quickly, that process, based on the minutes and notes I read today from the past, that appeared to be an untenable situation because it was too, too long of a process, took too much time. Community deserved quicker action, and so we revised it again, removing it from Appeals Board to a single Parking Commissioner on a rotating basis, looking at each appeal. So now, on a monthly basis, they, they're notified of appeals. Actually, pretty quickly, they have to do it pretty quick because the code says right now, we have to provide a written response within 15 days of receiving the appeal. So we have worked to enhance the customer service related to this process. Someone has 10 days, if, from the time the citation is issued, to file an appeal, and we have 15 days to review the appeal and respond. As part of this ordinance, that, none of that process would change. The thing that would change is, we would be making it so that the city administrator or their designee would be undertaking the appeals at an administrative basis. In other words, going back to the way we used to do it. And the reason, the biggest reason why is, my first meeting with the commission back in, I believe, June or July, they, they expressed concern that, as volunteers, it's one, obviously very time-consuming for them to do appeals. And they also were concerned that they don't necessarily have training related to administrative law or these types of things to adequately take care of this. It is the case that we have, in the past, and we had been doing, really, already staff was heavily participating in the process throughout the whole time. The legal department was processing all of these appeals, doing most of the legwork to put the appeals together, to get the photos and wrangle it. And, to be honest, the, as my understanding is, the legal assistant down there was basically saying, here it all is, this is probably what should happen, and they would look at it and sign yes or no. We've changed that because, once that assistant went away, we started having the appeals, the administrative aspect of collecting them and receiving them, that is now with the Downtown Association. We do pay the Coeur d'Alene Downtown Association a contracted amount each year for a variety of tasks, and now this is one of the tasks they undertake. So the, the, a lot of the legwork that was going into this, it has kind of fallen back on to the commissioners, and they've started sensing that they don't feel that they have the experience or education to necessarily do this, and they want to be careful. Their other concern is that, because it's a rotating basis, each commissioner might have their own perception on what should happen, and it might not be consistent. And they really want to provide consistency for folks in the community. So they want to make sure that folks who are working with this law every day, day in and day out, maybe are looking at these and able to provide a decision. So with that, they unanimously proposed and recommended to you that we modify this to, basically, back the way we used to do it. Staff believes that this is an appropriate way to do it. I, based on the number of appeals, while it is time-consuming, I believe that I can effectively do this. While it says city administrator or designee, I do manage parking for the city, so it likely would fall to me. It is also the case that we would probably have the city attorney's office assist with it in some ways if I felt like I was burdened by this. So that's it in a nutshell. It's fairly streamlined. The Parking Commission obviously has many duties. You know, they work really hard to, to review. They get a lot of feedback from the community, and each one of these folks is a different stakeholder group member. So we have someone who's disabled, we have a person from forklines, we have a downtown business owner. Each one of those people provides perspective related to this, and they provide recommendations and work with staff on that. This was one of the things, when we, when we adopted the commission in 2005, we did say that they would do appeals, so we are acknowledging that this would no longer be part of their mission specifically. However, I want to say that, should we determine that this is a burden on staff, the language related to a designee still could make it so that it goes back to the Parking Commission. So this is a good time for a test run to see if we can handle it in this way, and I think it's appropriate.
Questions for Sam?
Well, I would just comment as the council's representative on the parking commission, because I happen to be the newest guy, I think, but they, like Sam said, I mean, they're all in favor of it, and I think it makes, it's a pretty tough thing to ask community volunteers to be in that kind of a, almost kind of a quasi-judicial role, and the consistency is a real factor, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
I will note also, if you have specific questions for the commission, Vice Chairman Mark Rogers did attend tonight, so if you would like their perspective directly, he's here to answer questions.
Any other questions? Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you explain historically why these can be appealed? I mean, I always thought that was weird when we showed up here, and it's like, everywhere else, you get a parking ticket, you pay the parking ticket.
Yeah, it does, it is, I was looking that up today. It's very diverse across the state. Some of these are administratively reviewed for appeal, some there is no appeal, some go to a magistrate court. It's, it's pretty interesting how diverse this is. So I think, for us, it's about due process. It's giving people the ability to, you know, have that last chance to say, look, there was this circumstance, or maybe you misread this, you know, I didn't do this. It's giving them that one last chance. You know, under administrative law, due process is important, so I think, I think it's appropriate to provide for an appeal process.
And that dovetails into my next question, Mr. Gridley. Due process in the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, we're entitled to due process, but yet, in this case, it stops, and that's legal, that, you know, you appeal it to one step, unlike a court of law where you can appeal it and appeal it all the way up to the top. In this one, it's kind of one and you're done. And that's cool?
Well, I think, as a lawyer, you're never done until all the appeals are over. And so certainly, if somebody wanted to take the time and expense, they could, they could challenge some aspect of the enforcement or the regulation of parking in the city related to a ticket they've received. But most people, yes, they get their shot, explain, as Sam said, whatever the circumstances are that might excuse the ticket, and then go on about their business. But I don't think it's totally accurate to say that you couldn't take it further if you really wanted to, but I think it's unlikely.
Okay. That's good. And Sam, so let's pretend that you are the, the hearing officer, and it's someone you know. What happens?
If it's someone I know, then I would probably recuse myself and send it to the city attorney's office for review.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam?
Just real quick, thank you for the time on the phone today. We had a lot of this discussion, and I think you answered a lot of the questions of the history and where this was going. I am, in your, I'm sorry, in the financial portion of the staff report, you had said there's no financial impact. So I guess I would want to see how that's going, as far as how much time that's taking you, and if it's referring it back to the legal department, what that, so there is kind of a financial impact to the city, in my opinion. Then my other question, you got through most of them, is, what training will you go through in order to adequately respond to these appeals?
Sure. I have a master's degree in public administration with explicit education in administrative law, so I'm fairly comfortable with those, those things, and I got an A in the class, so hopefully, I'm okay.
That was the only thing you didn't bring up, so I, you checked right off.
Councilmember Gookin did note that I appear to have left boarding school today, so.
Thanks, sir.
I would, regarding the financial thing, too, and it's probably horrible to say, but I am salaried, so there's no necessarily explicit.
There's no financial change.
You can abuse my time.
Not a financial impact, no financial change.
Any other questions for Sam?
Move for Council Bill Number 16-1020.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Amy, if you could read the title, please.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Section 10.27.050, regarding the procedures for the appeal of a civil parking infraction within the city of Coeur d'Alene, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing the publication of a summary, and providing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rule?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will now move on to the expenditure of funds from the parking fund for the collection of parking tickets. Again, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll keep this one very, very brief. You have recently authorized us to begin aggressively collecting unpaid parking ticket fines. In order to do that, part of the process is to send an initial letter, the city is required to do this by state law, to those folks, inviting them to pay their fine prior to being sent to collections. There's some specific legal language under state law we must include. In order to send those letters, we need some money to do so. So we are asking, because we did not, obviously, have this budgeted initially in the original budget, we're asking for authority to make this expenditure with the theory that we will make this money back through the collection of fines. We do also have $8,000 in, in marketing and signage in the budget. Last year, there was zero. I was working to enhance our signage for these lots, and we do still need to do that, as well as do additional marketing to make sure folks know where our public parking lots are. So if we have to, we can tap that funding as well.
Questions for Sam? Looking for council action?
I would have a comment that, again, in this area, from being at the committee meeting, there were, there was talk and discussion about, the council has apparently looked at this before, and the, kind of the whole enforcement aspect, and I think there's a feeling that, gee, they haven't really taken it serious, or maybe they've said we're gonna get tougher before, and then they don't. So for me, besides just the practical aspect, I think that it sends the message that, no, we really are serious. So I think this is supportive of the Parking Commission's work as well.
Any other questions for Sam? Looking for council action?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of the expenditure of approximately $6,776.04 from fiscal 2016-17 for the parking ticket collection letters processing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Motion carried. We'll move on to our public hearings for tonight. Our first one is a quasi-judicial public hearing. This is A-4-16 Marina Yacht Club LLC located at 1,000 North Marina Drive for a proposed annexation and zone request from County Commercial to City C17. Are there any members of council that have a conflict of interest in this case? There was a sign-up sheet for anyone that, when we get to the public testimony portion of it, that wishes to speak. If anyone has not signed up, they'll have another opportunity down the road here to do that, and we will go to the staff report. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a public hearing from item A-4-6, application of Marina Yacht Club LLC requesting an annexation of approximately 172 acres in conjunction with zoning approval from County Commercial to C17 Commercial and navigable water zoning districts. On property located at 1,000 South Marina Drive and portions of the Spokane River and Lake Coeur d'Alene surrounding Blackwell Island. Public notice was published in the Coeur d'Alene Press on September 3, 2016, and all other required notifications have been made. As you can see, the subject site is located, highlighted here in green, and you can see the existing corporate limit line is here in green, as well as outlining the city. And you can see it crosses the river here, and this ties into it. This is aerial photograph of the property, and I'll just give you a brief description of the subject property. The subject property on Blackwell Island has been used as a marina for over 50 years. There is also a floating restaurant on the Spokane River that has been in operation there for many years. Prior to the marina use, the site was used as one of the largest sawmills in the area and was also used in the past as a landfill by the city. In 2005, the applicant requested to be annexed into the city. The applicant was in item A-5-05. The Planning Commission recommended to the city council to approve the annexation with C17 zoning. The city council subsequently approved the annexation request in 2005. The final step prior to completing the annexation process is the applicant and the city to obtain an annexation agreement between them. Both parties were unable to reach the agreement at that time, and the property was substantially not annexed into the city. The applicant has indicated that significant improvements have been made to the marina over the last few years, and the marina continues to grow. Permits have been approved by the permitting agencies, including Idaho Department of Lands, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the existing marina. The applicant has indicated that city services, including sewer and water, would accommodate their growth and future plans. Of the 172 acres that is requested to be annexed, approximately 24 acres are on land. The land area is proposed to be zoned C17, and the remaining water area is proposed to be zoned navigable waters. The applicant has also submitted a limited planned unit development application that went before the Planning Commission on August 9, 2016, in item PUD-3-16. The Planning Commission has made a decision to conditionally approve the PUD contingent upon approval and completion of the annexation of the subject property. This slide indicates the annexation map that shows what will be recorded if the property is approved to be annexed. It's the exact meets and bounds of the annexation. Here's a history of the annexations that the city of Coeur d'Alene has conducted over the years, and you can see in '79, it started here, and then in 1995, it crossed the river. And then in 2000 and 2008, it went north, and 2016 is the subject property today. The existing zoning of the surrounding area, as you can see, it's commercial to the north, there's navigable waters in the river, and there's navigable waters in the lake, and the subject property ties into it this way. Proposed zoning is, as you can see, the land area C17, and the remaining water areas will be navigable waters. There are four findings that need to be met in order to approve an annexation. The first finding is finding B8A, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan indicates this area in two locations. The first one is the Spokane River District, and it's in the stable, established area, which are areas that don't change very much over time. They kind of evolve. And the second area is the Coeur d'Alene Lakeshore District area. And you can see, this is the area highlighted in white, and this is also in the stable, established area. The comprehensive plan objectives, as it relates to this site, I have mentioned three here on this slide, the rest are in your staff report. Objective 1.01 with the environment, 1.02 water quality, and objective 1.03 waterfront development, which encourages public and private development to incorporate and provide ample public access, both physical and visual, to lakes and rivers. Finding B89, that the public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. See the staff report for the specific departmental comments regarding stormwater, street, water, wastewater, and fire. Each member, there's, we have a member of each one of the departments here to speak on any of the issues that you may have regarding each one of these subject matters. Existing sewer map, as you can see, the sewer comes across 95 here, and this is a public sewer to this point, and it's a private force main on, from this property, and a private force main from the RV park. Existing water service map shows the existing water line cutting through the property to angle at this, at this location. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The site is generally flat and in part covers an area over the Spokane River and Lake Coeur d'Alene. There are no topographical or other physical constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable for the annexation request. The following slides are site photos of the site, and this map just shows you where the photos were taken from. The first one is from a dock looking south through the water towards the lake. The second is on the north part of the property, looking south, and you can see Highway 95 is right here. This is looking northeast at the existing boat maintenance facility and the boat sales area. This is looking south towards the boat slips. This is looking towards the existing restaurant, and this is looking north to the boat storage area, or the trailer, boat store, boat trailer storage area. And finally, finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land use. See the staff report for the specific departmental comments regarding traffic and the surrounding neighborhood and the existing land uses. There's an RV park to the north, to the east is the Spokane River and NIC, to the south is the lake, and to the west are some residential uses and 95. The proposed C17 zoning district is a district intended as a broad-spectrum commercial district residential development at a density of 17 units per gross acre. The navigable water zoning district is a district intended to provide for the appropriate usage and for adequate protection of the surface water resources that is within the city limits. This map is the existing land uses in the area to the north. This is the commercial, and you can see civic uses at NIC. There are 25 recommended items to be included in the annexation agreement, including two from IDT. Staff had received an email that IDT wanted to, to take out two of those, and it's number 24 and 25 of your, on the items on your staff report that they no longer need in the annexation agreement. The decision point tonight before you is an annexation of this 172 acres in conjunction with the zoning approval from County Commercial to C-17 Commercial and navigable water zoning districts. The City Council will need to consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, deny without prejudice. And that concludes my presentation for this annexation, and I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to make a presentation as well.
Questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, can you go back to the slide where it describes what navigable waterway zone is? So the second paragraph, additional recreation of the public uses. Can you explain, in this zoning and annexation, we're going to be applying navigable waterways to the slough that goes right through the middle of this property?
That is correct.
What are the allowed uses in that area?
Anything related to water activities, boat slips, boats, boat activities, anything water-related.
So if navigable waterways also exist elsewhere in the city, how come some people cannot put in their own boat slips and docks?
They'd have to ply through the local jurisdiction, whether it's the Department of Lands or the Army Corps of Engineers, to approve, to get those docks approved, or Cooten County, depending on where it's located. But if it's in the city limits, they'd have to ply through those to get them.
So this is basically grandfathered?
That is correct. And they probably, they have received permits for those, those existing slips.
Okay. But we don't, that's not a consideration then because, I mean, they're not going to add anything else in there?
At this point, they're just requesting the annexation.
My concern isn't for this, my concern is for other areas that are navigable waterways in that that doesn't allow anyone who's next to a navigable waterway to build like a marina or something automatically.
They would have to get that approved. They could request that the city would have jurisdiction over those areas to approve or deny it as well.
Number, the recommendations for items to include in the annexation agreement, this is on page 19 of your report, number three, Cedars and the Marina will be required to connect to public water system as a private system. What does that mean? Maybe Terry needs to answer that.
Terry, do you have that question okay?
Good.
You want to repeat the question?
Yeah, what does it mean that Cedars and the Marina will be required to connect to the public water system as a private system?
What we discussed with them is the possibility of installing a master meter at the 12-inch main just north of the marina, because they may have a desire to relocate infrastructure as they develop the area. This allows them to do it without having to redo easements and rights of way. So if we put a system out there with a large master meter right at the 12-inch, the rest of that becomes private. They take care of the hydrants, they maintain the mains, and they can change infrastructure a little bit easier to suit their needs.
So, so our duties stop at the meter then, kind of like everywhere else?
Correct.
Another question for you on item 11. As part of the annexation, they will be required to transfer their potable waterweights to the city. The city will not need their well that exists on the property. Why don't we need it?
It's a very small well, and we're, with the amount of water we pump, we're concerned that there may be some influence from the river, so it's better for us to stay away from those types of wells. We're just looking for the water rights themselves.
Okay, so we're not going to regret this down the road when we need more pressure and more wells and?
No, that one wouldn't, wouldn't do much for us anyway.
Okay. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Dan?
Well, I have a question on the water portion of it. If this is approved, and once it's approved, what kind of a practical or functional difference is it going to make that that portion of waterway is now in the city versus not?
Right now, it just makes it more, that the city boundary line is more homogeneous, and it ties into each other, and it's all, the jurisdiction flows a little better than just having a sporadic holes and pockets everywhere. Right now, we go 1,000 feet out into the lake in front of the marina in the city park area, and this would just tie into the existing city limits and go right back up to it.
And I guess I'm wondering too, you know, with the property, it's, the land mass, it's easy to tell that's private property, that somebody wants to annex, but most of this request actually is for the water surface, and I guess I'm wondering why the private owner includes that. Is this normal for this kind of an annexation? Because, you know, who owns that surface water?
The city does not own it, it's just they have jurisdiction over that area, that city boundary. We have jurisdiction to approve or deny things that happen in that area. We just have a little more authority.
I might add, Mayor, that it gives us the right to enforce our ordinances in that area, so there's been issues like hydroplanes and other, other issues on the water, and that would give us jurisdiction on the surface. The state still owns the lake bed and would issue encroachment permits, but we would control the surface.
Other questions for Mike? Don't see any right now, so thank you. I'm going to, Mike, if you, if you might come up here, I think there's some other people that may want to sign up here, so I'm going to pass this back along. Anybody that has missed signing up can, can sign on that sheet, and we'll go ahead and open the, the public testimony portion of it. Any of the speakers will be, will be sworn in. Each speaker will give his name and address and state if they reside within 300 feet of this area. And we will begin with the applicant. They'll have 10 minutes to present.
My name is John Barlow. Thank you. I live at Po Box, well, I live in Harrison, Idaho. I also live in Coeur d'Alene occasionally. My address is Po Box 1180, Coeur d'Alene, 83816.
And Amy, did you need to swear, swear, Johnny?
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I'm here tonight representing Marina Yacht Club LLC with a request to annex property known as Blackwell Island. Blackwell Island has been a part of Coeur d'Alene's history since the 1800s. Sitting at the mouth of the Spokane River, it served the area's largest sawmill for decades, the city's landfill, and then later the natural transition to marina uses. The Yacht Club Marine was established in the 1960s and has always been the most accessible and well-protected marina in the Coeur d'Alene area. The Cedars Floating Restaurant has been in operation since the 60s. I have some pictures here of early and the site. This was the, where the old highway was, and as a landmark, you can see the highway in the background, and I call it a highway, it was a horseway. And this photo is of the, what we call Blackwell Island, but what in fact was not an island. And as you can see, along this area, before it was dredged, that's where the marina is today. And the dredging occurred during the sawmill operation in order to enhance the access to logs. Since the purchase was made in 2004, our plans have evolved around enhancing the features of the lake with improvements to the marina, boat sales and service, along with related uses with the Cedars Floating Restaurant. Significant investment has been made in procuring permits for improving the marina, as well as recent investments in storm drainage, marina parking, service buildings, and related marina operations. This is an overhead, overhead view of, of the property. I'll show, as you saw a minute ago, the portion that's being requested for annexation is here. Everything north of this line is already in the city. This is a view before we did the work several years ago, last, last year. You can see the, the, all the parking lot drained to the lake. A lot of it was not paved, most of it was not paved. Bank areas were sloping and eroding into the lake during erosion events. This is a photo showing after we completed the work. There's paving in all the areas, all the paving slopes to drainage and drainage swell areas, drainage swells in, in numbers of locations. And so today, prior to our request, the, the improvements have been made and are part of the reason we're here. The marina and, and restaurant business have been, been very successful and growing, and we've basically outgrown our utilities and, and feel it's time for us to annex and be part of the city. Another photo showing curbing and drainage swales and so on. We also obtained permits from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the State of Idaho to dredge and work the waterway. Both these permits are valid through March of 2021, so they continue. Tonight, we're requesting your approval to annex the property into the city of Coeur d'Alene of 24 acres of land, plus the areas of waterway that the staff reported as navigable waterway. That request, as you understood, is primarily for the benefit of the city. It's not something we requested, but it allows you to have the control that Mr. Gridley commented on. This is basically the same map that you saw with the meets and bounds description, and this represents the piece that we're talking about on our behalf. The city comprehensive plan, land use base map, designates the property as stable, established. This applies, implies that the area's neighborhood character has largely been established and in general should be maintained. The development we have completed and are expanding upon is consistent with the use of the land in the past. Page 70 of the comp plan describes the Coeur d'Alene shoreline today as a mix of uses from east to west. As the shoreline progresses west, the slopes become less restrictive, giving way to condos, golf course, beaches, marinas, and restaurants. We feel the annexation of this parcel into the city, along with the continuing use of the land in a marine and marina-related activity, is a vital part of the changing use and continued use. Through such property, people are connected to the lake and the lake activities via boating, dining on the waters, such as the Cedars Restaurant. It is clear that the established and planned uses of Blackwell Island site are consistent with the neighborhood and the established comprehensive plan. The findings of the staff report that you just heard pointed out that stormwater, streets, water, sewer, and fire are all, have all been reviewed by your staff. We have met with every department. We've gone through in detail the requirements that would be necessary on their part, and all of these have been accomplished and are agreed to, agreed upon by ourselves. So in order to, to effectuate the annexation of this property and to continue on with the use and operation we have as marina and marina-related business, we find, as you are aware through planning and zoning, that we requested a PUD, and in fact, a limited PUD is, is the wording. The requested zoning allowed for our existing uses and expected uses of a marina facility, including boat sales, boat slips, seasonal boat storage, boat service area, boat showroom and storage. Our requested PUD overlay deal with existing and planned marina access and seasonal parking and boat storage. For your benefit, understanding that this was done in planning and zoning, I have the, the map of the PUD request, and I believe it was in your packet. And for clarification, this first area along the river, we call Area A, we want, we want to receive the ability to allow for shoreline stabilization. And the reason is that it gets occasional flooding. There's a lot of old foundations from the mill, and it just needs a lot of TLC that we need to maintain over time. Area B is the area along by the, by the Cedars Restaurant, and the reason it's longer here is because we have to get utilities from the restaurant back to the site. This area contains the various marina restaurant structures for operation of Cedars, and there are low utility structures like transformers, sewer lift stations, and controls. Area C is everything around the marina and, and all of the finger of land at this point, and that, that represents the 40 feet of the shoreline ordinance of the existing marina property. We are asking for a 20 feet of height to construct and maintain, move and repair, et cetera, a marina-related facilities, gates, ramps, and accesses that deal with an ongoing operating marina. All of these structures exist currently, and that's obviously the reason that we need to have access to the marina. Area D is just a small area where our sales office is at this time. We're requesting 30 feet of height in that area. And then there's 150-foot shoreline area that has a restriction on height north of River Avenue, and there we requested a 60-foot in height between the 40-foot setback and the 150-foot setback in order to build future dry stack boat facilities. What those are, are vertical marinas, where boats are put in upon request and kept in storage so that they're available for an owner. Actually, it's quite a bit easier. It's boats out of the sun, it's out of the water. Those of you that have a boat know the challenges of trying to maintain it when it stays in the water the whole season. And then Area F is all this other cross-hatched area, and is requested to affect all existing facilities in the addition of any future, and specifically includes permitted uses of inside and outside boat and boat trailer storage, boat showrooms, boat sails, and other related boat uses. It also would allow for dry stack user parking, those people using the dry stack at .2 spaces per stored boat. That, incidentally, is a higher rate than what your ordinance allows for marinas. And then lastly, this cross-hatched area is the open space area, including 1.7 acres of, of waterway. If you, for those of you that remember 10 years ago, the, the open space was the entire marina on the last proposal. And, and so this is an open area that the PUD language would say, the contract, annexation agreement would say that we would have no use of, it will always be maintained for access. Part of our core permit and Department of Lands permit has the same requirement. During the core permitting, there was a lot of input from the public about paddleboarders and kayakers that go through the slough and go around and go back through Blackwell Island and back to the river. So that is the area designated as open space. The marina waterway at Blackwell Island is unique in that all the area, and I, as I pointed out in that earlier photo, all of this area was land. We still receive a tax bill from the county. It's all designated as a parcel of land, it's not waterway, even though the state, because of the water, has flooded the land, is under their jurisdiction. We originally owned the land and pay taxes on the land, as shown in the county parcel. So the key points to consider, our zoning request is consistent with the city comprehensive plan as designated, stable, established. Marinas and restaurants are listed in the comp plan as acceptable uses. All of the existing Blackwell Island property that is presently in the city, that's everything in this area, is already zoned C-17, including the piece that you just recently annexed. The zoning uses are well-established in the businesses, our uses for this area. Essentially, the business that you see is the business that we will operate under this PUD. The areas we requested for PUD conditions are fully respect the 40-foot shoreline ordinance, and the only exceptions are the items that are necessary in order to access and maintain the marina and the restaurant. And then prior to applying for the annexation and rezone, we've met with every department, as I mentioned, and because of that, the conditions of approval that are outlined in your staff report are all acceptable to us as part of our annexation. The investments that we've made the last two years prove that our commitment to the marina and restaurant uses are real. marina and restaurant uses are real and fulfilled. There are several million dollars that we spent. Improvements have already been made to the site, and thus, we are now merely asking to be annexed into the city to allow these same operations to be used and to continue. And I apologize for going over.
No, no problem. Questions for John? Woody?
Couple. John, on that 35-foot open space, is that part of the PUD agreement?
Yes, sir.
That it's open forever, people can paddle on it or boat on it, and then your marina uses that also, correct? The boats come and go to their different slips?
Right. Any boat can come and go through there.
Okay. And then where is the access for the public to that?
From the lake.
From the lake. So it's going downstream?
Or upstream. Or from the Blackwell Island Marina, or from the beaches at the college. Lot of paddleboarders come that way. Lot of paddleboarders start with Ro. They start at the city beach, and they take them on a route that goes down the river, comes back around the slough, up through the marina, turns right, and goes into Cougar Bay.
Okay. So let me ask you on the access to the slough. So you provide that spot in the marina, but like I was thinking, BLM closes for six months.
Right.
They can still use the slough, though, but you can't park in there?
Well, when the lake goes down, a portion of the slough dries up.
Gotcha.
But the marina is still there.
You dug it deep enough to keep the water.
Yeah, the public space and the PUD agreement are 365, so.
Seems like we did this about 10 years ago.
Right.
So I'm having these flashbacks. Bear with me, okay?
Okay.
So you.
I was here, too.
I remember. Kinda. So basically, what you're asking for within that little, that 40-foot shoreline ordinance is a couple of little adjustments, but nothing really more than what is there, other than the office. The sails can go up another 10 feet. Is that correct?
Right.
The building that's there could go a little higher.
Well, we have it to a height of 30 feet because there may be some impediment that goes on, I mean, a light pole, for example, and those types of things.
Sure. Okay, so the other thing that you're adding is out of the 40-foot shoreline ordinance.
This area right here?
Right. And you're going up on those boat storage rooms there. But that doesn't fall into the shoreline ordinance, really?
It does. If you look at this, this is a line that's equivalent of River Avenue, and Randy may have to, or Mike may have to explain this, but in your ordinance, it says that land shoreline north of River Avenue have an additional buffer zone up to 150 feet away that have a heights restriction of 30 feet. And what we've requested is in this area, not this area, to be able to go to 60 feet.
That's the variance you're looking for.
That's the PUD overlay that we got approval from the P and Z on.
The other thing I noticed was, one of the conditions was the bike pad easement that you applied $13,000 in lieu of, and how did that, where did that number come from?
That came from staff.
From staff?
Right. There's an existing bike trail easement that came when Blackwell Island RV Park came in as a PUD, and that easement was basically along this line. There's also a bike trail easement that goes along 95. And it was requested from staff that it's not likely, and we concur, that this would ever get built because it doesn't really go anywhere, that they'd be better to receive money to use for improvements on the trail system somewhere else. And we agreed that that was fine with us. There is, by the way, a water, your city waterline goes right through here as well, and that waterline easement continues.
So you can't build over the waterline?
Can't build over the waterline.
Thank you. Any other questions for John? Ron?
Yeah, John, as Woody mentioned, and Dan was here, Dan English and myself, a few years back, when this was also proposed, this is a different presentation than what was proposed at that time.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
And, you know, if anybody's been out there and looked at the area, what it is now, it has been quite an improvement, quite an improvement out there.
Thank you.
And I noticed in the minutes of the planning commission, some of the comments that were made by different individuals, and I think that if this presentation, I think, if this presentation would have been presented to the council a few years back, it might have stood a good chance of passing. Might have, I should say.
I think. I appreciate that comment. The PUD then had condominiums and 110-foot of structures in this area and different areas there that had different levels of building, but I prefer not to go back and talk about where we were. Here we are today. We're very proud of the fact that what we did was start the ball rolling on our own, and I don't know how to do this, so, but when we spent the money to do what you're talking about here, was a pretty big commitment that this is what we want for this piece of land at this time. And, you know, how property is, you develop it to its highest and best use for the economy that you're in, and this is where we're at today.
Other questions for John? John, I just had one on that last slide that you had. You were talking about there was an Area A, and maybe just talk a little bit about the soil, shoreline stabilization.
Right.
Exactly what that involves with that.
Let me go back to this slide. If you see, it's this bank along here, and it's somewhat stable with the vegetative growth, but during higher and low water events, we've all seen what happens to a river. It moves, and it has some disruption, and there are remnants of foundations there from the old mill that poke out, and then that enhances more erosion, and so it just needs some maintenance. And so the wording specifically is erosion control. For erosion control, and then that otherwise, it could find itself in a condition where nobody can fix it, and that's not good. We had some of that happen with the county ordinance, which they're just recently changing, is they had their 25-foot setback, but nobody could do anything, even if it needed to be done. And so this clarifies that if there is some stabilization that needs to be done, we want to be able to do that.
So it's erosion prevention efforts that are going to go along the shoreline?
Yeah, there's no structures allowed. Not, no structures at all. By definition, a transformer is a structure, so to get, to get from, I think there's a photo here. To get, to get from this area where the Cedars is to where we can connect and get into sewers lines and whatnot, we need to go along that bank, and that might involve a sewer lift station that's a structure like this, but it's a structure. And by definition, in the shoreline ordinance, there's no structure in the 40 feet. So we felt important to clarify that a transformer, which you see one right here, that's a structure, so it needs to be permitted, and that's the reason we outlined that area. And then, of course, we also need to have access to the Cedars, and then we want to keep our flagpole, and we'd like to keep these light poles.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Well, thank you. John, you'll have 10 minutes at the end to.
Thank you.
For a summation, too. And so I do have a number of folks that are on this list, and I will call them up in order that they would like to give public comment. The first one is Gerard Mathis. State your name and address for the record and be sworn in, please.
My name is Gerard Mathis. My address is 1006 East Lakeside in downtown Coeur d'Alene.
Okay. Amy, if you would.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I filled out my name on the list, and for lack of a better thing, I listed that I was opposed to the annexation, but I need to clarify that. Not really opposed to the annexation, I think that I just have some questions for myself, and perhaps they've actually been answered, that seem a little hazy, and I just want to make sure are answered before the annexation is taken care of. To give a little history, I grew up in Coeur d'Alene. I was born in 1960 in a hospital. There was an old farragut building that was on blocks, and I'm not opposed to development because I much prefer my son being born in the new Cootenay Medical Center. And I had to laugh when I saw the bridge, and they said it was rickety to cross, because in fact, that was the bridge as a little boy that we used to cross regularly to take our stuff to the dump. And the dump was right on the river, and while we were backing up to the closest pile to dump our stuff out in the open and perhaps grab something that looked interesting to us, those were the days, we'd also see the occasional bulldozer pushing garbage right into the river. So I must say that I need to qualify with whatever I'm going to say with the idea that I'm actually very impressed with many of the things that Mr. Hagadon has been able to accomplish for the community, and I think many things have been positive. So whatever I'm saying is just that I still have some questions that I'm not sure have been sufficiently answered, and I think should be answered before the annexation request is approved. Now, it was mentioned, it's going to C-17, which I'm not absolutely clear. Admittedly, some of the things that I'll bring up are probably a quotient of my ignorance about things, and perhaps even of what is already in the report, but the question I have is for future use of the C-17, even though they've stated right now the highest structure will be 60 feet, whether there's some perhaps openness to be able to build higher structures in 60 feet. I just want the council to consider that because, again, I feel a little bit ignorant to be able to answer that question specifically and legally, and as I understand, this is a legal proceeding. I think that what they've done with the marina, I agree completely, and I'm impressed, I've gone out there and seen and gone to the restaurant. I'm impressed with what they've been able to do with the marinas cleaning up that area, and I think they've done a very good job. However, 60-foot building is somewhat a different structure. It'll have a different skyline out there, and because of that, my question I have, and I don't know if this has been answered by an impact study or the idea of design standards within the city, is whether the idea of an impact study of some sort has been done on the amount of noise that might be added by the mechanical devices that actually operate from that building. Maybe they don't make that much noise, but I just was wondering if that was considered, and the amount of what has become more of an issue in urban settings, and that is light pollution. And I'm most concerned that as part of the annexation, that PUD, all those acronyms, that we perhaps know that some type of consideration for noise mitigation and lighting mitigation may be considered. As I believe it was considered when the Mill River property was first developed, certain type of lighting has less impact on the night sky and therefore the neighborhoods that surround it, even though that neighborhood is primarily and has been primarily industrial and commercial. The question is places like across the river, the college is certainly not necessarily residential, but it's a different sort of use. It's a recreational use. People sit on the beach. Also, the people up on the hills overlooking the area, and there are people, of course, south and east, is it east, south and west of there, that may be affected by that. So I would like to see that kind of thing considered. So really, in summation, I'm mostly concerned about height issues, whether the height could get higher, and whether it's been addressed, the amount of noise that might be added, and the amount of light pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Roger Smith has signed. Didn't say if you'd like to testify, but you're more than welcome. Name and address for the record, please, and be sworn in.
Hi, my name is Roger Smith, 810 Bancroft Street, Coeur d'Alene.
And Amy will swear again.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you. A few years back, when the first Atlas, the old Atlas Mill Site was approved for annexation into the city, there was a lot of concern about the fact that we have out there on the river quite a jewel that's worth preserving. That is noted in the comprehensive plan, that it is worth preserving both public access and public viewscape along the river. We have an amenity there for the city of Coeur d'Alene that most cities would really love to have, a beautiful natural feature to expand our city around. At that time of the annex, the city saw fit to write a resolution, sort it to that effect, city council did. The city also established an ad hoc committee that was called an advisory group to the council at that time. When that ad hoc committee was disbanded, we saw fit to establish a continuing group called the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor. I'll call it the Friends Group, but it really is Friends of the Spokane River Corridor. That group has meetings. It involves people from organizations like the Bike Trail Foundation, KEA, the Mill River Homeowners Association. So it's sort of a coalition group, you might say, of people that have an interest specifically in riverfront issues and preserving riverfront, whether it be for bike trails, for naturalness, for viewscape, all of these things. The, so that group, our group, the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor, is a spinoff from that original ad hoc city committee that was an official city group, continuing with that interest. Regarding the Blackwell Island annex, we don't have any specific strong objections to what's being proposed out there. I'd like to be very clear about that. We're not here tonight to oppose that, but we do have some concerns. As we saw in one of the slides, one of the specific findings that was necessary was for the, stated in the comprehensive plan, was the preservation of public access and public viewscape along our river. I didn't see much element in this proposal for that, and I think that certainly needs to be considered to be in compliance with that comprehensive plan. Our biggest concern is setting some precedence, that this project would set some precedence that would then apply to other areas of the riverfront that are yet to be developed, such as the two big mill sites, one already annexed into the city. So any thing that happens with the Blackwell Island PUD and its approval and annexation conditions, how would that be a precedent for future development on other areas of the river? So we're very concerned about that. Specific things like the public access and viewscape, the open space equalling can equal water. Water can be open space. That's, I understand, due to some earlier agreement and kind of a special case here on Blackwell Island, but we have to be careful about that being a precedent for these other areas. What it boils down to is that we don't have many special rules for the river district. We have in the comprehensive plan a lot of dreams, you might say. We have a lot of visions for the river that includes the preservation of public access and views and waterfront areas, but where are the teeth to really enforce that? So we need to be looking. So we need to be looking at that. Maybe a new zoning is needed. To avoid some of this piecemeal development, where each time a proposal comes forward, we have to create a special set of rules, or not have a nice standardized set of conditions by which to proceed for this very special valuable riverfront properties that we have as a gem here, a blank slate that the city of Coeur d'Alene has, that many cities would love to have. So I will just leave with a recommendation, and we will be pursuing that, and that is that a workshop be held, that a city actually take a lead, possibly with our group heavily involved, but to hold a workshop, to look at what can be done, to guarantee that some of these visions of the comprehensive plan are actually standardized and imposed on future development along our river. So hopefully, the, our friends of Spokane River Corridor can play a big role in such a workshop, but we will be approaching the city further about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chet Gaddy.
Chet Gaddy, 4465 Green Chain Loop. I do. No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Good evening, judges of Coeur d'Alene. I address you as judges because you are in a quasi-judicial hearing, and as judges, you know that it's not as easy as the staff put up there where you can vote one of three ways, and you're done. As judges, you need to make findings and recommendations. You saw from your staff that they have findings for you, and they want you to make those. I'm going to ask you to make one more finding tonight. Tucked in this PUD, there is open space, as we saw, and that open space counted against the 10% open space required by your PUDs. I think that is a terrible precedent to set, and I think you need to make a finding that it doesn't count as open space. If that 10% comes out of that water, which is already public, what is to prevent development down the river on both the north shore and the south shore, for saying, "The river is our open space"? There's your 10% open space. What is to prevent that from happening? So I would like to ask you to make a finding tonight, that the river or the lake cannot be used as open space, for the open space offset. Now, that might make it a little sticky to do other things. It's, can we approve the PUD without the open space? Sure, you can. You're city council. Can you say that this property is so unique that we don't need an open space? You could do that, too. But the fact that tucked into that PUD is a waiver of a requirement for open space because the river is there, because the water is there, I think that is a very, very dangerous thing to set. And I would like to reiterate what Roger said, and the first gentleman that spoke was saying the same things. We really need zoning for a river district, not just a comprehensive plan with dreams. We need zoning with rules and regulations. Now, I don't get paid the big bucks you do, so I'm passing that on to you to take for action. And if I were you, I'd follow my example and say, "I don't get paid the big bucks that staff does, so why don't they create a zone along the river that has rules, that has rules about open space, that has rules about access, that has rules about light pollution, that has rules about height restrictions, maybe lower down by the river, that's like what your shoreline protection ordinance has, and then they can grow going back, so we have some views of that river?" Right now, you have a comprehensive plan, and every time someone says "comprehensive plan," everyone in the room goes, "Not enforceable." But if you had a zone with rules, that would be enforceable. So I would like to make, ask you to make a finding in this proceeding somehow, some way. Mr. Gridley can probably help you with the wording, saying that no, public water is not open space offset. And then, go ahead and approve this. I think the city needs this marina. I think it's good for the city, and I think it's a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, if you wouldn't mind clarifying on that open space issue, it's rather unique because that is deeded, built property owned by the applicant. That's, so it's different then? I mean, I just want to clarify that it's a unique situation.
Yeah, and I think that's something that staff has discussed in a fair amount of detail because we are concerned about the river. We don't want to set precedents that we can't live up with. We want to be consistent in our treatment of everyone. I think this is a unique piece of property. The water, in this case, is being used for open spaces, contained within their development. There's no other place along the river that that will occur, along the Spokane rivers we go further west. So that's a big difference. Encroachments into the river are controlled by the Department of Land, so as people typically want to build docks, unless they're annexed into the city, they can build docks, they can do whatever. Once they're annexed in the city, then our shoreline ordinance does apply, unless there is a PUD that allows a trade-off, if you will, of public rights for private development. So although the proposed waterway, the open space in this development, I think is unique, I can't think of another example of it, although Woody, and maybe Ron can comment on this, the boardwalk in front of the existing resort maybe, may have been public open space. I'm not sure, but this is something that fits within the requirements of our PUD for a variance, if you will. And, and we have a slide, we could put it up, that has the definition of open space. It's different than what we may all think in common language of what open space is. There's no requirement that the open space be something you can walk on, sleep on, put your dog on. It is open space. And doesn't even have to be accessible to the public, according to the way the rule is written. It just has to be accessible to users of the development. So it is kind of an odd thing. I think there are some good points that we might look at modifying it, but I really don't feel like there is a precedent that's being set here that will affect the rest of our development down the river.
Okay, thank you. Next on the list, we have Scott Yost. Does Scott, you wish to testify? Is Scott here? Okay, we'll move on. And Julie. Forgive me on the last name. I'm going to try it. Del Sase? There you go. So name and address for the record and be sworn in, please.
Hi, I'm Julie Del Saseau, 743 Fairmont Loop. And that's in Coeur d'Alene now, or on the edge, if it gets annexed, right?
Okay, and then be sworn in, please.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. First off, I want to say thank you to the staff for answering my many questions, and I have spent a lot of time reading public records about this project because it involves a lot of agencies. My first slide is, starts with the finishing of the PUD in July. I did not attend, but I read the staff notes, and I was at the zoning change meeting for the county on this parcel in 2016 it was recorded, but before that, it was rural residential. And now I understand the zoning of C-17 is commercial with unlimited height for condos. And I was trying to understand the density, so we could talk about sewer capacity, but I hadn't seen that the, it looks like there's unclosed density and new industrial marina uses. So there's a lot between the lines with anything to do with water or anything to do with marinas, because there are some new uses, and I have a list. I am very concerned about the exemptions to the shoreline ordinance. I think it's called the protective shoreline ordinance. And when I read the newspaper, it said that there was an exemption by the Cedars, and about five years ago, that transformer fell into the water and caused a PCB violation. And if that's the reason we're giving a variance at the Cedars, that pole should have been moved, but it was put back in the same place. So that was a DEQ record that I did read. So I don't think that the transformer is a good reason for having an exemption to protective shoreline at the Cedars. And I don't think having 60-feet stacked boats along the canal is a good idea either. When I was at the county zoning meeting, they said that they would describe the marine activity there, but also large open space. So maybe they could put the stacked boats up on the open space. I did not, I agree with the gentleman who talked about maybe a new zoning. Navigable water zoning creates a lot of confusion about who has authority for construction on our waterway. And it was established in the early 80s when the resort was built, and I know it has been used for some other things staff shared with me, but one thing it was used for was annexing around Tubbs Hill. And I would just say Tubbs is a native vegetation. There's not going to be a lot of soil disruption, especially at an old dump site. So it looks like that navigable water zoning needs to be updated to include new BMPs that are recommended based on 30 years of lake studies. So that's something that maybe could be taken a look before, taken a look at before you make a decision on this, because there might be other people that want to zone in, you know, utilities that are perhaps in a sensitive area. Impacts from multiple open-ended phased development, I understand that the dredging is going to take place over several years, and the canal might be closed, and then there's going to be condos, but we don't know what that's going to look like. The last time this came before the city, there was a stack of buildings that looked very much like the one that's at Potlatch Hill now, so maybe that's all been reworked, but it would be helpful to make an informed decision. Impacts from multiple open-ended phases of development with no timeline, and this navigable waters being brought in creates some navigational concerns that usually are addressed through the Department of Land, like where the navigability line is. So like, if you look down the Spokane River from the Cedars, if there's new envelopes, new seawalls, docks, that's going to push all this boat construction towards NIC. They've already taken down some of the pillars that were protective. So I think looking at how that shoreline gets, affects a number of things, is more of a comprehensive look. So moving along, how do we go to the next slide? I only have a couple more. Let's see. Two, okay. PUD. Okay. Downstream from where the dredging is proposed, we have lots of interesting gravels and silts that affect how our aquifer runs. And I have a little poster back there about the aquifer and how it's affects both states. And to determine the effects of stored mining toxins that are going to be on this annexed island, there's two disposal facilities that will bury the dredged spoils, and they'll be placed in these holes and capped. We have to be careful those contaminants don't leach during flood times, and the city wells are one mile downstream, so I would say the city could use some written quality assurances, just like the Army Corps still waits for. And so the permits from the Army Corps and DEQ have been extended by request from the applicant for seven more years, and, you know, I don't know that there's a big hurry, so there's some things to work out. And then, oops, wrong direction, excuse me. Whoops. All right. I will confess, this is my first PowerPoint. This is like, who can read it, right? So what I did was I enlarged it, and I printed it, and I promptly left those at home. So they're enlarged, and I will get them to you, but because they're already submitted before the meeting, I hope you'll accept them. And they're a list of some of the same ordinances and comprehensive plan items that were originally brought up by Mike opening, and I kind of have a different take on why I see that this annexation tonight does not fit the comprehensive plan. I'm not against the project. I just wonder why, when it was bought in 2004, the shoreline destruction has still continued. And so it'll be interesting to see how we can improve things that have been erosive, you know, since we have a new owner. But I guess market conditions determine a lot of things, and I don't understand them all. So I will get this list to you. And my last slide, thank you for your patience. Whoops, what did I do here? Hey, here we are.
Let me help you. Would you like me to help you?
Sure, thank you. Last slider. That's good.
Would that be this one right here?
Yes. Whoops, maybe it's the second to the last. Nope?
Is that it?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to conclude with island construction overall. It's very complicated because an island has water around it, and I just learned at this meeting that even though it was bought in 2004, there was some land that is now water because of timber industry. But let's not forget, before that, we have the tribe, and there are a lot of artifacts that were discovered here during scoping of the project, and a requirement from the Army Corps will be to see that a archaeologist is on site. So I found that to be pretty interesting, and that will be consistent with the Historic Preservation Act. So interdependent agency coordination helps with truth finding in a real democracy. So marinas, they're established only through the benefits of our waters. The island development is surrounded by water, and it depends on it for any business livelihood. So I think we, the people, we are the stewards of our shared lake, and the downside of this package, call it where the island is, call it the lake, we have a history of mining contaminants, and they're from the same sources that are found in the lower basin that's under circla control for cleanup. So cleanup and the way that we do shoreline stabilization, really, I don't know if the city should be in the business of directing that. In summary, I just want to say that the scope of this project really needs a more comprehensive view. The Army Corps is still waiting for the final construction plan. There are unanswered questions about quality assurances related to the aquifer and leaching of toxins. And then, when you see that quality assurance plan, you might consider it annexing. Maybe you're ready to do it tonight. I know that you've heard a lot. The applicant has requested both, that came out, that he has extensions from both of the Clean Water Act permits that they have. And I see that foreseeable orderly growth towards where I live, along the south corridor, is pretty predictable, and it should be a little more gradual, though, going from rural residential to full-on industrial, commercial, with 24/7 operations, marina hoists, lifting yachts into the dredged basin, mechanical stacked boats. I mean, I could go on, but I'll stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Pat Bema? If you could get your name and address for the record, please. If you could get your name and address for the record, please, and be sworn in.
Pat Baim, 743 Fairmont Loop.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, as far as I know. First of all, thank you for all the time you spend in reviewing these things and trying to see everything. So I appreciate your time and appreciate the time of the staff, too. And I'm not against this project that the city eventually annexes the marina, Hagadon properties on Blackwell Island. But what set of rules are in place to guide the development of shoreline and submerged lands, including the annexation, included in the annexation? I mean, what set of rules are there? At this time, I recommend the city postpone annexation of Blackwell Island for the following reasons. The city should have a firm handle of the scope of these projects, particularly their busiest, most sensitive waterfront, NIC Beach. Uncertainty about the impingement, viewshed, aquifer, and other effects on our public trust should cause pause and close examination of all particulars to frame any project designs within strict guidelines. The stretch of river included in the annexation proposal is the busiest stretch on our lake. Every type of water activity happens there. We are deeply concerned for public uses such as swimming, fishing, paddle boarding, canoeing, kayaking in these narrows. The shoreline, shaded trees, and shallows on the island shore across from NIC Beach provide cool paddling safe from the motorboat traffic. Industrial development of that shoreline or up to it and the setbacks I saw as Mr. Barlow showed are, sound good to me. That sounds very good. I didn't realize how much was a setback. But I'm very, still very concerned about that shoreline. Right now, we have nice shaded, cool paddling away from the motorboats. So if we have industrial development of that shoreline, that will destroy that coveted respite, respite, okay? When we keep the tree shoreline, our viewshed from the Dyke Road and NIC Beach will not be so sullied by the high rises that will surely emerge from the island. And the 10 years ago, yes, there were high rises and I can understand that happening. It's just that I would hate to see only that and no trees and no shade along that river corridor on that side. There's no construction plan, oh, okay. The next point is new construction of a 60-foot structures within the 40-foot setbacks or within the setbacks and additional requests for work within those setbacks near the Cedars are new uses, not marina business as usual. They're new uses. We have not seen these boat stacks. We don't know what they look like. And part of paddling on our water is what we see when we paddle. There's no construction plan submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers, which is supposed to contain, the plan is supposed to contain scores of repairs and improvements prior to construction, but there's no construction plan to the Corps yet. These 60-foot industrial boat stacks should be added to the construction plan. This marina construction should be carried out under management of our state and federal agencies that have been involved in the negotiations and planning for about 10 years on this project. This will assure that its construction plan is congruent with the guidelines for such projects across the state and nation. Next point, there's no mitigation included with the request for variances of city setbacks and water quality assurance within the city comp plan. It's important to study the history of your planning for the future. So take a brief look, if you're planning the future, look at the history. Look at the type of, look at the type and style of development that these corporate entities have on our lake. Floating green, driving range, at least four marinas, a floating restaurant, corporate headquarters, and a Coeur d'Alene resort, all on our lake, on the lake. This is their style, but there's no room on our river for such development. So please consider writing in a tight framework of any shoreline development along the Spokane River. This annexation should not be rushed. The developer said that they have no plans for the rest of the island beyond the marina. So let the right agencies, the Army Corps and the DEQ, deal with the marina construction and then consider annexation when we know what we're in for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
We will go next to Dr. Lisa Manning. Name and address for the record, please, and be sworn in.
My name is Lisa Manning, 5858 West Cougar Gulch Road.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, thank you. Thank you, council, mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Kootenay Environmental Alliance Waterkeeper Program. I'm the Lake Coeur d'Alene Waterkeeper. And I would first of all like to thank all of you for your hard work, your staff as well, many issues that you have to consider. You have received my letter with regard to the annexation and variance issues. Those of you who have had a chance to take a look also at the litany of studies that support upholding shoreline protection, which is what I'll talk about tonight. I'll highlight some issues for your consideration. First of all, shoreline protection, as I know all of you are well aware, is very important and should be upheld. I know that protection the city is covering is a big concern of water quality. Our beautiful Lake of Coeur d'Alene and Spokane River is something we all embrace. Vegetation shoreline buffers play a critical role in protecting the ecological function of water quality. We urge you to not allow any variance to the city's existing 40-foot no-construction-zone requirement along shorelines. My letter and the references clearly demonstrate why the setback requirements along shorelines are extremely important. We very much appreciate all that you do and consider our comments. I'd like to just read a few passages for those of you who did not receive the letter to reiterate and reinforce the importance of these issues in this consideration. The Lake Coeur d'Alene Waterkeeper Program is of KEA, working as an on-the-water advocate to ensure Lake Coeur d'Alene meets Clean Water Act standards. We appreciate your attention to important water quality issues on Lake Coeur d'Alene. With regard to the proposed annexation and zone change for the marina yacht club, the Lake Coeur d'Alene Waterkeeper recommends that the council uphold the city's shore, existing city's shoreline protection measures and setback requirements and not grant any variance that would compromise its integrity. Coeur d'Alene sets the backdrop and recreation basis for our city, but it is important to remember that lakes' water quality is sensitive to human-related land use activities. The lake is currently listed on the State of Idaho's 303D list of impaired water bodies of the pollutants phosphorus and heavy metals. Recently, Coeur d'Alene Wastewater Treatment Plant underwent extensive and expensive upgrades to reduce its point source phosphorus contributions to Spokane River and meet water quality standards. We applaud the city's efforts with regard to the plant, but the majority of phosphorus pollution in Coeur d'Alene Lake and Spokane River is coming from non-point sources. Non-point sources of phosphorus include sediment generated by logging in the watershed, development around the lake, septic systems, stormwater runoff, fertilizers, ashes from fires, petting livestock waste, and bank erosion. As many of our countries first adopted setback standards back in the 70s, shoreline setbacks were established largely to protect structures from erosion and effects of wind and water. More than 40 years later, we now know the best available science that 25-foot setback do not protect the ecological functions of the adjacent water body and thus strengthening vegetation buffer requirements should be considered or at least upheld. Area specialists certified in hydrology, stormwater, and erosion control, as well as area agencies, note that the simplest and most effective best management practices, you'll hear BMPs, for the protection of water quality is a 50-foot to 200 native vegetative buffer. The Lake Coeur d'Alene Waterkeeper encourages you to enforce the existing City of Coeur d'Alene Code 17.08.205 shoreline regulations. 17.08.245 prohibited construction. Construction within 40 feet of the shoreline shall be prohibited except as provided for in section 17.08.250 of this chapter and the ordinances cited. And not grant a variance in the marina yacht club. These variances reduce the function of these very important buffers. And then I ask, the annexation should have language at least requiring revegetation from an approved native and beneficial plant list, which I attached in your handout. After any instances of soil disturbance and require the guidance of an experienced local engineer and hydrologist. To better understand the importance of vegetative buffers, we have included a list of peer-reviewed scientific studies on buffer depths and their relationship to reducing pollutant loading and for providing wildlife habitat. Again, thank you for your consideration of these important matters as you review the proposals on and around our lakes and watersheds. I am open to questions, follow-up at any point. One of the handouts, please provide to your staff as well as they review these issues. Understanding the science behind riparian forest buffers, effects of water quality, is a very useful guide when you're making these decisions. Buffer and habitat science. And then finally, the other handout, protection of riparian ecosystems, reviews the best available science. So you've got some good documents to make some good decisions. And I do want to thank the individuals who have also spoke. I wrote some notes here and I think a workshop is an excellent idea for all of us. We will all learn more and making decisions with the best science available will be a sound decision that we can all stand behind. And lastly, a gentleman had, Roger Smith. It is very important, the precedence that we set. And here today, we are looking at something that can make a precedence for future construction and development practices. So this is not just one proposal. This is a proposal that can set the stage, that can open the door for what we do in the future. So again, I applaud you for your effort and thank you very much for your time and effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. Then we have Ed Maureen.
Ed Maureen, 5864 Harcourt Drive.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your attention and thank you for hearing us out. I know it's a long night and I'm going to try to keep three brief points here and get out of here. You've got a lot on your plate. This is a, you know, these guys do quality work and you've seen some great, great projects in this city. I think there's some important things to consider, though. And the first one is with respect to annexation. When that happens, the city, residents of the city bear the burden, right? Our taxes go to provide services that anybody that gets annexed benefits from. And as a taxpayer, as a citizen of Coeur d'Alene, as a resident here for 21 years, I pay a lot of taxes and I like the services that we get. But I also want to make sure that we, as citizens, get services back or get benefits back. And one of the things that I think about is, there are a lot of people that use boats. There are a lot of boat owners that may use this marina, but there are also other people that like to use that area. They like to paddle through there. We've heard that testimony from the applicant themselves. But there are also other folks that want to have access. And it seems to me that as citizens of this city, we should be able to get some access to that area. The applicant pointed out that there's an easement for a bike path. That easement should be retained. If you've been out on these bike paths around this community, and yeah, I'm a biker, I bike to work every day, I bike downtown to get things, I bike to the store. But if you look at these bike paths, they are getting used by people that are walking, they're in wheelchairs, they're in bikes, they're on skates, they're on skateboards. And I think it's a wonderful, wonderful attribute to this community. And it's good for people to get out, right, from many, from many different perspectives. So I just want you to think about that and make, you know, protect the citizens, make sure we get those benefits for access. And the other thing I want to let you know is, I'm a professional engineer. I spend a lot of my time thinking about studying and doing and dealing with river hydraulics. And we've heard a lot of discussion about riverbank stabilization and protecting this area and also protecting the buffers. And what I see is a diminishing ecosystem out here as we infringe on the water and we remove our riparian areas. So it's really important, as previous speakers have noted, that we retain that buffer and that we not only retain it, but that we don't harden it. We use modern techniques that are softer, biostabilization measures. We retain vegetation and we enhance the vegetation with native species so that we don't continue to infringe on the existing ecosystem that's here that makes this area so amazing and makes this lake such a gem. The other thing that I wanted to touch on was, there was an earlier comment about open space and, you know, one of the things that I've come to learn in my profession is, the beds in the banks of these lakes and rivers, they're owned by us, the citizens of the State of Idaho. Idaho Department of Lands, they administrate those beds and banks on our behalf. That's why you have to get a permit when you get a dock, right? But calling open water, something that is open space, doesn't really work for me in that definition because we've already got that right. You didn't give us something. We get to retain that as citizens of this state. So that comment earlier about calling that open space, I think that's a pretty solid comment and you should, you could, should consider that. And if there's a requirement of the PUD to provide open space, then that probably needs to be dealt with in a different manner. So that's all I'm going to leave you with. I'm going to keep this brief. But again, I think, you know, annexation, what are we as the citizens in this city getting in return for annexing this? And I think open space, but also access to the water. And what a wonderful deal that would be to have a bike path along 95 and be able to go down to the Spokane River from that side, just as we can on the other side. You know, the beds in the banks are owned by us, they're retained by us. That's our right. And we should look at softer techniques and retention of those buffers along our water lines and our shorelines. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Okay, we are going to take a five minute and I'm going to have them on the clock of five-minute recess as requested by someone and we will be back in five minutes. Put you on the clock here, Ron. Put you on the clock here, Ron. And now we're at the point where we have, the applicant has time for a summation.
Thank you. I'm going to answer some questions and have some comments in a second, but first to rebut a couple of the issues, I'd like Mr. John Magnuson to come and discuss the open space point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's John Magnuson, 1250 Northwood Center Court, Coeur d'Alene.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. The question has been posed about, or concern was expressed about the possibility of establishing some precedent by allowing the applicant to use the open space as designated in the PUD through the marina property. And my purpose is to tell you today that that would be of absolutely no precedential value, and I would like to tell you why. I appreciated the comments about the Coeur d'Alene Hospital in 1960 because the longer you're around here, the more you remember, but unfortunately, there's a lot of things that go back past 1960 that a lot of people don't know or have forgotten. One of the things is, is that the level of this lake is, as you know, maintained by a dam that was put in in 1906. This photograph is important in that it shows that the present marina location is actually, as Mr. Barlow had indicated, it's dredged out of private property located above the ordinary high watermark. So this is probably the only applicant, certainly the only applicant in the city of Coeur d'Alene of which I am aware, and probably the only property owner of a similar nature I'm aware of on the lake, that actually owns the lake bed within their own property over which the water is located. Which is why when you look at the annexation map, you see the boundary out towards the southern edge by the cedars extending out is actually property owned by the applicant, taxed as submerged lands because the dam's not going away, but it's taxed as submerged lands and owned by the applicant. So the question about, you know, the people of the state of Idaho have title through the public trust doctrine to the beds and banks of the lakes, that's all well and good, but that's the beds and the banks of the lakes that weren't artificially created on private property through a dredge, just like the slough. And so, this is, this is a factually unique circumstance of absolutely no precedential value. It can't stand for precedential value that somebody else who does some annexation on the river would attempt to use public open space out on the river, which is true open space, not internalized open space within their own property. And what the applicant has guaranteed and insured here is that if approved, in accordance with the PUD, that strip of open space will remain unobstructed in perpetuity as a condition of the PUD to allow continued access to and through the slough, which by the way, was also dredged and is also manmade and created. So the applicant can, under the current scenario and regime by the Idaho Department of Lands, make application as it has done and apply for encroachment permits within its internalized lagoon for additional marina improvements and the like. The applicant could make an application in the absence of an annexation. This is not suggested, but there could be a relocation of encroachments and improvements with the approval of Idaho Department of Lands that would potentially impair or impede that. But that's not the case because this is actually preserving and promoting open space over state waters on private property. A wholly factually unique, and if it's precedential, I would ask the council to look back in 2005 because the open space requirement was found to have been met in that particular application based upon the same argument as presented today. It was larger than a 36-foot strip, but it was the submerged beds underneath the marina that formed the basis for much of the open space.
Any questions for John?
I have a question. So if the open space requirement was not applied to the canal, then there would be the option to apply for it to be closed?
Not to be closed per se, but, but there's an ability, it's a marina operation, it's been a marina operation for over 50 years. Marina operations change in terms of customer dynamics, what kind of docks, what kind of configurations, what you'd like. So there's always an opportunity to go to the Department of Lands and amend your permit to get additional locations or scenarios of encroachments and particularly whereas here, you know, this is one of the only places with an entirely internalized marina on otherwise private property, as opposed to, you know, the beach house, it's a traditional marina, it's out on the lake. So to answer your question, it could change internally with the constitution or complexion of the marina with state approval, which is fairly customary, and so this ensures that that will not happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John? Dan?
Yes, I think John mentioned that they pay property taxes, of course, on the whole parcel. The portion that we're talking about where the water goes over and now there's going to be the public access, do they pay the same rate of property tax on that? Or you mentioned something about, is there a different rate for submerged lands versus the...
The county has a category called submerged lands because, you know, a lot of people want to forget it at the state of Idaho, but actually, I mean Cougar Bay, Cougar Bay was a dairy farm before 1906, so there are quarter sections in Cougar Bay that are still taxed as submerged land elsewhere, but this is the only one in the context of a marina.
Any other questions for John? Thank you.
Isn't what you just said what our attorney said earlier? Would you say that was parallel to what he said?
I think was one of the few instances in which Mr. Gridley and I would actually agree.
Just checking.
Just checking, you're, you're on top of it. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
If I could quickly confirm to Councilman Evans, the PUD open space would not change because we reconfigured the marina. It's preserved by your PUD. But within the portion that's a marina, we might have a dock that moves. But always adhering to and acknowledging the PUD open space is an area we cannot encroach upon. That's, that's when a non-lawyer explains it.
I've got that, and I have another question in those lines. Is it...
Go ahead, yeah.
I am curious about the thoughts, the original thoughts about having that open space requirement being in the canal versus on land, on the island. I mean, obviously, there's some discussion on how to meet the open space requirement, and I think it may be helpful to some of the citizens and put their minds at ease on why that, why you landed there.
It actually comes from the precedent of 10 years ago where the marina was the open space as well, and this council approved it then. So we were just following up with that. The other aspect is that in a marina operation, we have security issues for people's boats on their docks that involve gates and ramps and so on, and it's very difficult to introduce an access point in the middle of a secure marina. And the other thought that I had that I was going to comment in a minute is that you, the city, do have a piece of property that you have access that could easily use this open space.
And one more question. Julie brought this up earlier, that the canal, she mentioned the canal could be closed for dredging. Do you want to address that?
Well, if we were to engage and commence the permits that we have, the marina would, the canal would be closed and we would have to come to you to get some kind of approval to do that. At this point in time, we don't have that scheduled or we wouldn't be spending and investing as we are to continue the marina operation that's in place. We have been granted and enjoy a seven-year extension on those permits. Those permits are extendable beyond that if necessary. But everything is driven by the economy of the day and the time. And today, that's not part of what we have envisioned at all. So the other aspect that we want to rebut with deals with the protection of the shoreline. And our engineer, Phil Boyd with Welch Comer, was in charge of the project that you saw, and he has some very good response to help you with that comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Phil Boyd, 350 East Kathleen.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. So I'm going to reference a couple of pictures here. Part of, what I, I think what I'm intending to do here is add priority to some of the comments that the, the public have presented. And kind of the first one is just the setback in the buffer zone. You can see here that the buffer is already impacted. There's things in the buffer. When we originally started down the path of, we'll say, redecorating this area, that was really short, Amy. One of the things that we looked at was this area, you can see down here was previously paved. You can also see that there's improvements in the buffer zone. The county, which this was currently in, has a, also has a buffer setback. Theirs is 25 feet. When we started looking at this project, it was originally just to repave the cedars parking lot and perhaps make some improvements to the gravel parking lots. As we started working through this with the Hagenon Corporation, we actually saw the opportunity to do something better because currently in this configuration, all the water, the stormwater runs off into the river. And so as we worked through it, of course, because I share many of the passions that you heard these folks speak about, is there's there an opportunity to prevent the stormwater from running off? And so we headed down that path, looking at opportunities to regrade the site and what was the best way to do that. Ultimately, what we landed on was the configure, these options, the configuration that you see here, and this is probably the best picture. And the, kind of the prominent feature that you see there is this curb line and this large infiltration area here, swell area here, there's another one back in here. So we collected all that stormwater that previously ran off into the lake and into the slough and directed into a surface water source. That actually took a variance from the county, took an engineering report, bunch of time and effort with the county to get them to allow them to do that. And the conclusion of the county was, this is much better to achieve this than what would have currently continued. Certainly in the cedars, it wasn't required in any shape and form because it was an existing paved parking lot. We could have gone in and just repaved it and not done anything, but to their credit, as we kept pitching this idea to them, they moved, moved down that path. So I think one of the main features that John's talked about here is retaining the ability to maintain those encroachments that are in there, certainly the curb line, the stormwater controls, and those types of marina-related features. Another comment I want to make is on the shoreline stabilization, and actually, this is a good picture here. You can see some, there's actually some erosion in this area, which is a little bit surprising because this gets so little wave action through here because it's so protected. In this area, this one's a better one. Actually, that's not a good one either. This area, you can see it, there's considerable erosion over here, and it's primarily from old log structures that were there that have rotted over time, and the soil has just started to slough into the slough there. That permit, we actually went through the Corps of Engineers to secure a permit for that, which probably took us nine months because it was a very complex permit, which requires many of the features that Ed Marine talked about earlier. We have to put in willows, there's a very specific design that's going to go in that area, and it's been permitted by the Corps of Engineers. That same requirements that you see here, in the event it was necessary here, would be required by the Corps of Engineers and perhaps, perhaps more requirements. Important thing to note, and I think John said this a couple times, but in this area, the only thing that the PUD is requesting is the ability to go in and do that work. And you can imagine that if they were to secure a permit from the Corps of Engineers to do work below the ordinary high watermark, but they didn't have the variance to do work above the high watermark, how do you get to do that work? Because the city Coeur d'Alene says you can't do work in that area for shoreline stabilization. That's the sole purpose of that PUD variance through here. There's no intent to modify the buffer other than to do shoreline stabilization in that area, which would be in compliance with the Corps of Engineers and Department of Lands permitting. So those are the two points that we wanted to clarify because I think there might have been some lack of clarity. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Any questions for Phil? Phil, the property now is served by a septic system?
Yes. Well, it's, it's a little more than a septic, septic system, but yeah.
And the plan is to hook into the city sewer?
Right.
Okay. All right. Dan?
Well, just a question to clarify, in the picture, and if you're out there, you can see trees, quite a few trees and the vegetation along there. Just to clarify, there isn't a plan to get rid of the trees or the vegetation, and trees are kind of a sensitive subject.
Again, I, I guess we're getting down to real details here, but the PUD variance for work in the shoreline setback is for erosion control. If a tree fell over and it ripped out a root ball and it was creating erosion situation, that would be the thing, we'd be on the phone to the city and say, hey, we've got to get this tree out of here. Other than that, I don't know that cutting trees down would qualify as erosion control. They certainly, certainly would not in my book.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, Phil, where, show me up there where the old bridge used to be by the old KVNI radio station.
So the KVNI radio station was right about there, and then the bridge ran across here.
That, that's the one that would go down by the college?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm using my left, my left hand here, I'm a right-handed guy, so, but it's, it's right there, Councilman Ettinger.
And the old KVNI radio station was right in there?
The bridge was right here.
Yep.
Right there.
And this is your property here. And that's where the highway was.
Okay.
And you can actually see that, I think, in one of John's photos. That's not in that, oh yeah, you can see the bridge and the KVNI radio station was just over here.
And in that overhead, you can tell. Okay. Any other questions for Phil? Wood?
Phil, some comments on, two things I picked up on was the impact of mining waste and aquifer cleanup. That's kind of up your alley, isn't it? In regards to this, protecting aquifer?
It is. I think at this particular site, that man's probably the expert on that topic, having secured the permit for it. So maybe...
Yeah. Any more questions on, Phil's message is that we have addressed before we even came to you, the shoreline stabilization issues, the stormwater runoff issues. We've already built it and paid for it. We just recently got the core permit to place some gravel on the shoreline to help stabilize and then plant the seedlings that are required. So a lot of the concerns that you heard that might happen, we've already addressed before we came today. Then as to the mining waste issues, those are, those are questions that come if and when we do the dredging project. The sediment is the bottom, primarily the bottom of the lake. The testing that we did for five years showed every, there are sample holes throughout the island. And the sediment is where, the sediment is what the heavy metals cling to, for those that have studied this. And that's one of the reasons that they don't want anybody to disturb the lake bottom without a proper environment. And our permits are extensive. Mr. Marine was involved with those and through the EPA. And they, they exist and they're in place and they involve a lot more work that, that would still have to be done to start, but at this point, that's, that's not a project that we're even contemplating.
Any other questions? John, are you done with your...
The last comment I had was, there was some discussion regarding taxes, and I didn't want the council to forget that this is going to be a new source of property tax for you and a new source of, of an expense for us. But we do gain the sewer and the water. We are paying for the extensions under the discussions that we've had. We've already met with water and sewer and fire, well, every department. And we basically wanted the agreement of the department issues done before we came to you, so we didn't have a problem like we had last time.
Any questions for John? Any questions for John?
I just have two quick things. I would, this dry stack boat storage is new to the community, I think. And I'd had some folks who had heard about it and had talked to me about that. So the questions came up in that, and I actually talked to our fire chief a little bit about it as well. And I read some things online in the middle of the night. So some things that came to me about that were, there's a high concentration of fuel and boats and flammable material. That's when you put that many boats into a stacked building. And the request here, that I understand, is to have that stacked building moved closer to the water than the normal setback would be. So what I want to be sure of is, in approving this this way, the annexation piece with the PUD, which isn't our piece here, is that the, the slough, the catastrophic issue would be addressed, and how can you talk about how that might affect something down the road should something happen with a new type product like that?
Sure. Every building that we need to build has to go through a building permit. Every permit is reviewed by every department, including fire. We currently have, I think it's 38 boat storage buildings at our state line facility. They, there are about 1,500 boats now currently stored, and they are all permitted under the code. The code has provisions for storage of boats, and it's no different in a dry stack. And these, these buildings would be significantly less dense than what we have there. And the fire department code issues usually deal with it by a maximum number of boats in a protected or unprotected building. That means sprinkled or not sprinkled. And buildings that are of a smaller size are not necessarily have to be sprinkled. But it would be a lot easier to control the fire here than it would be at state line. And yet they're both permitted and conditioned uses that are done all the time in America. Dry stack buildings are, are more common in Seattle than regular marinas, because land is so scarce. And people, also, as I said, if they don't, a lot of them don't want their boat in the brackish water. But it's not a new concept, it's new to corridor lane, but it's not a new concept to marinas by any means in America. It's very common. So the code, and the same codes apply nationwide, and so they've already been, there's a good track record of, of what is acceptable for fire and water and that kind of thing.
Good to hear. So then my other piece is, why, why is it necessary to have those within the shoreline ordinance area on that north of the demarcation line there? River Avenue, I think it is.
The, the access, oh, now I've done it. The, the access to the water is simply that these, the boats from these facilities are placed by a forklift. So, and they're big forklifts, but they'll, they'll pick the boat up and they'll run over and they'll set it in the water. So the purpose is that you don't want to have a dry stack way over here with the water over here. So we envision, when we master plan what we've already built, that somewhere in this area would be where dry stack would be with, next to these other service sales buildings, so that we can place boats in the water at the marina. And so that's the reason that, that we're asking that within that 150 feet, that we increase the height to, to allow 60. And the C-17 that you heard is already on the rest of the island, including your own property.
And has there been discussion regarding those dry stacks that address that question of noise, light pollution, and the aesthetics of what the dry stack buildings look like?
Yeah, I don't think noise is an issue. I mean, they, they're, they're boats stacked in a rack. And a forklift that on a Sunday and Saturday, more likely, more than any, would pick somebody's boats up and put it in the water. They're not doing it in the middle of the night, I can tell you that. And there's darn little light needed. We don't, they don't need to be lighted at night because it's a storage area. So I don't think either one of those is an issue. The other thing that we don't have, when planning, when we reviewed all this permit for the PUD, we had a photo from the highway area, and because of the elevation of the highway, you see well over all of this anyway, because it's an elevation more than 100 feet as you come in over the hill. So the, the building is not, it's not that tall.
Okay, and my, my last little question was, in one of your slides at the very, I think it's the one straight above this one, there's docks that are outside of this annexation piece. So I just wondered if those are, what, what happens to that?
You mean out to the south?
Right. If you look at the slide that had the red line on it?
Right, let me go to that for you. I'm getting better now that the meeting's over. So those are, those are permitted from the state under the Department of Lands. And so the question is what?
So then, how does that, how do the city services protect or affect, or how does this annexation affect those docks that are outside of it?
Well, they're actually in the city because of the NW designation.
Okay.
You see, it goes way out to here.
But it's just not part of the PUD portion? Is, is that?
That's correct. It's not part of this acreage that's of land that's access, that's, that's annexed. The acreage of land that's annexed is in the red boundary, you see. So this is, this portion of the marina is no different than Silver Beach or Boardwalk or any other marina on the lake. It's there under the, under the pleasure of the State Department of Lands, subject to a 10-year lease like every other marina.
Okay.
Ron?
Yeah, John, there was comment made that, uh, along the shoreline there, that, do you have, have any plans for building condos?
Not at this time, because the utilities that we have discussed and, and agreed to with the city are not large enough for condos. So when and if we had other development to happen, we would have to come back to you, to the city for a building permit. And then the departments would get involved, because it'd have different configurations for fire and for water and for sewer and all of that. But I can, our company has no interest in condos at this point in time. And so, and we, as you can see in this picture, we use most of what is available there for what we're doing with the marina operation, because we do store the trailers on-site for the people that have their boat in the water for the season.
Any other questions for John?
And to reiterate, the sewer and the water and those utilities were, are all private, which means it's actually a benefit to you, because we have to pay for them and we have to maintain them. And so that's a private, private lift station and private sewer line to your public line, which is along 97. And it's, it's something that we have to maintain to their approval at our expense.
Wood, you had one?
Yeah, just one thought, John. Thinking back 10 years ago and how that thing came crumbling down, I have to go back just to kind of question, what's different now than what it was before, other than you had a big development plan? At that time, as I, what I remembered, the passion was, the public was getting something for, for giving some movement within the 40-foot shoreline ordinance. That's how I remember it now. It could be taken different times, and I've kind of spun through staff the last few days talking about that and trying to find it. So my question to you is, if those two are equal, if 10 years ago there was a trail and it went away over two feet, what, what can I say to the public saying, here's what we got that we don't have now? Do you follow that?
No, I'm, I honestly don't follow what you're asking me.
Okay. I'm trying to understand what I can say to the public to say that this annexation, the public got something for being able to use the 40-foot setback in the shoreline ordinance?
What I can remember, and I'm like, Ron, I can't remember all of it, but...
No, and we don't want to, I get it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm trying to, in my mind, I'm going, well, that was, that's a different project, it could've even been a different developer.
Okay, gotcha.
But the point is that what I remember is this area was a PUD approval for buildings 110 feet tall roughly. Up to the water's edge, near the water's edge. And the request was to have a public walkway along the river, which we agreed to. Where it got complicated was, instead of a walkway, it became a multiple-use path, which got 12, 14 feet wide, and it was no longer a subtle, soft thing between the river and where people live. And the rest is history. You'd have to ask Ron about the rest of it.
And so, so take me back, here's another step back, and you were around when we did the boardwalk for the resort.
Right.
Wasn't the boardwalk part of what the public got in exchange for a variance in the shoreline ordinance?
There was a trade-off. In fact, that was the birth of the shoreline ordinance, if you remember. So I, I've been around before then. And we, we were not opposed to the boardwalk. We saw that as an asset. And as today, it still has, from an electronic counter, over a million people a year walk on it. So that's 31 million people. So it was, it was a win-win in order to allow the public to have access to the, to the lake, to build the tower, that at that time was very frightening to people, to build a tower.
So I guess that what's kind of leads me to tonight going, what am I, what are we getting in exchange for boogying around the shoreline ordinance?
You're getting, you're getting this facility into the city of corridor lane and the open space that we've committed to, which is the same as what you got 10 years ago. And it's a shame, and you know it's a shame, that this operation's been in the county for the last 10 years. Because it's going to be many thousands of dollars of new property tax for the city. It's also going to properly sewer and, and provide water to this piece of land that's surrounded by city. So sometimes it's just the right thing to do. And I think this is one. And I, I'm very proud that we don't have to come to you and say, we will pave it, we will curve it, we will protect the shoreline. We've already done all that on our own. Nobody telling us we had to do that. So you're getting that as well. And you have assurance it's going to be done, because it's already done.
Thanks. Amy?
Under the recommendations for the annexation agreement?
Right.
Number 23, going back to the pet and bike easement. So it states, vacate the portion of the existing pedestrian and bike easement that crosses the subject property and pay a fee in lieu of equal to $13,000 to help fund a future pedestrian and bike crossing along Highway 95 with the future expansion across the river. The city currently has a parcel with, I believe, approximately 100 feet of shoreline.
Right, right here.
I would like to make a suggestion that instead of the $13,000 in lieu of, that a private-public partnership happen to improve that city parcel for a more usable open space.
Your piece?
Our piece.
Right.
Such as a non-motorized launch point for kayaks, paddleboards. We could meet a lot of the comments addressed tonight and improve that parcel, I think, fairly easily. I mean, that'd probably be a question for Phil or you.
Well, you can use the $13,000 on whatever you want, but we don't have any plan to, to get involved with the development of your property at this time.
It would sure be nice if, because if you gave us $13,000 to do something like that, we wouldn't get very far. But you guys, with your curbing and all the things you've already done, would probably be much easier for you, and it would look good, too. And you get what you want, and we get a little something that we don't really have a plan for, but it's right there at the end of your fence line.
Yeah. Well, it sounds great, Woody, but this, this is starting to echo of 10 years ago.
Okay. We have to try, John.
Okay, and I respect that. But I hope you respect where I'm at, too.
Any other questions for John? Okay, John, were you, was that?
That's it, yes.
Okay, all right. So with that, we will close the public testimony portion of it and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions for Mr. Bahary and also for Mr. Gridley. Mr. Gridley, you mentioned that you have, our open space rules are easily available on a slide somewhere?
Yes, it is. Mr. Bahary?
Can we see our open space rules, please?
Sorry, what was the question?
I'd like to see the open space rules.
Okay.
Ordinance, whatever. That's it?
Yep, this is the code for the open space.
So that's the requirement under a PUD, the 10% open space. And as we talked about earlier, the definition is from our code, adequate private common open space, open space area as determined by the commission, the planning commission, no less than 10% of gross land area, free of buildings, streets, driveways, or parking areas. Common open space shall be accessible to all users of the development and usable for open space and recreational purposes. So technically, it could be used just for the private users of the development and not the public under this definition.
I see the word "land" in there. No less than 10% of the gross land area. But yet, the open space for this project, for this annexation, is water.
Well, it's water that's equivalent of over 10% of the land area. So no less than 10% of gross land area. It's a 15-acre proposal, as I understand it, and they're proposing 1.4 acres or something like that.
I'd buy that if it was all zoned C-17, but it's not. It's also zoned navigable waterway. And that uses the word "water," not "land." So I can't accept open space over water.
And I may not be able to convince you to accept that. So I'm just saying, it is what it is, as far as what our code has been written. If we want to change the code, we can certainly do that. If we want to redefine open space or clarify that, we can. But as written, I think it meets the requirement of the PUD, or the PUD requirements.
It's, it's also my understanding, because I've, I've talked to staff about this, this suggestion came from us. This wasn't theirs, is that true? Or did I misunderstand?
Which suggestion, I'm sorry?
That the open space be over the navigable waterway portion of the annexation.
That was where the application came forward.
So it came forward that way?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, Hillary, did you want?
To clarify, no, it was their suggestion. It was based on what was there 2005, they had open space.
They had open space over the water at that time. The only thing staff had suggested was that the annexation boundaries extend into the lake and the river to match up with the existing city limits line. So that's what we suggested over water. The open space area was from the applicants. But we did vet it through our legal teams.
All right. If anyone else wants to try to convince me that water is land, I'm open to suggestions.
Well, I asked this question, and Mike explained it to me as if I have a pond in my backyard, I'm paying taxes for under the water.
Your pond is not zoned as navigable waterway, though.
That could be. But could I make it that way and run little boats in it or something?
That's so darling.
Thank you. I'm trying to help.
I know you're trying.
I know, this isn't easy, this is...
So Dan, if they sucked all the water off of it, then you could accept it as open space?
If it was zoned as C-17, it would be fine with me. If we, if we made a recommendation that the entire chunk, and Mike is gone, but if Mike could bring back up the zoning map for the annexation, and if we changed it from navigable waterway to C-17, I would be okay with it. So if that little sliver in there was C-17 also, and I don't know why it's not, I mean, what's the county zoning on it now? Is the county, I mean, I got the impression from Mr. Barlow that the county zoning on the entire thing was all consistent. I mean, they did say there was submerged land.
We do not have the county zoning on any of these slides, so I'm not aware what the zoning of the water was in the county.
So I have a clarifying question, and I feel like I'm pretty solid on this. John Magnuson helped answer it. If this is not considered open space, the canal is not considered open space, it can, it would have the potential to be the access shut off to the BLM slew. But if it's considered open space, then in the annexation agreement, it ensures that that area is to remain open, and, and that prevents it from being shut off.
That is correct.
So we're protecting the access for community members or whomever wants to use it by designating it open space.
That's correct. If that is designated open space through the PUD and the annexation, once that's designated that way, it can't be changed or filled in or shut off.
I might add, we looked at this historically, and when it was a sawmill, the reason they dredged it out was to bring logs in. So probably won't happen that they put a sawmill in, but a scenario where that becomes log storage again, and that whole marina is covered with logs. So like I said, it won't, it probably wouldn't happen, but that is something that could happen. Whereas if you, if it is preserved as open space, it can't happen.
I just have a quick question for Troy, if he may know this. The county, it's submerged land is how it is designated. Would that transfer over to city? How, how would that transfer over in the annexation? Would that, do we have that category in the city?
That would be the assessor's work. So he would look at the valuation based on, I imagine that's the category he's valued, or it's been valued at.
So i-if it came into the city, would it be considered to be land or submerged water as it is now in the county?
Well, it would be the value of the land and the property taxes then would come to the city. So it'd be comparing the other properties that have submerged land, very much like waterfront is assessed that way, and so it'd be looking for comparable values.
Do we have other submerged land that's in the city now, or is that considered to be land?
Not intentionally.
I don't know of any other property that we have.
So it would probably be deemed to be land by the assessor when it came into the city? Other questions? Okay, so we would be looking for some council action?
I might have just one more question.
Okay.
And this one is for you, Mike, I think. You talked about this navigable water designation that goes through the open space and all, and makes it contiguous, and said that the city would control the surface water of all of that property. So therefore, then, the city could put up buoys, signs, directional information on the surface? Or is that controlled by Department of Waterways or other?
Well, that's a very interesting question. I think if it's out in the lake, the buoys that we have, the swim buoys and no-wig buoys, they are affixed in some fashion to the bottom. So that would require a permit from the Department of Land. Why I say it's interesting is because the part that's within the marina here is technically, you know, in the marina property, or they own the property underneath. So I guess we'd have to get with them if we wanted to put buoys out there. I haven't thought all the way through that, so.
Any other questions? So we'd be looking for some council action here, if anyone so desires.
I'd like to get the thoughts from council on what Woody was referring to, just as a discussion point amongst us on the public benefit. Obviously, it's a great benefit to annex this property into the city. I'm wrestling a little bit with the vacation of the bike and pet easement. I am comfortable with the canal being counted as open space, knowing that it could be potentially closed off without it being considered as open space. I like that protection. So I just would like to hear your guys' thoughts. I'm wrestling with a few little things, but I'm almost there.
You know, I, I agree with you. I kind of feel that push and shove, and John kind of put it in my face, you know? He said, oh, I'm feeling this flashback, and it wasn't good. I was here, it wasn't good, it wasn't pretty, and it went a lot of hours and a lot of turmoil and a lot of fallout afterwards. No offense, John, total respect, I under... And you know what? I went out there last week. I hadn't been out there in 10 years. The bump was gone. We used to get air if we went fast enough.
I was so disappointed.
It was beautiful. I was, I was totally impressed, and I think that's why, thinking about our little weed patch out there, you guys have got it so nice on your side, and even the RV park is so nice, and it's going to be a while before we can do anything, and that would make us feel all kumbaya that, look, Dwayne helped us get this little piece of dirt we have so that you can put your kayak or your paddleboard in there. It would make you feel like you have some access there. Now, the open space is great, it's open, but access, it's, you can't launch there, you have to kind of paddle around to it, and I get it. And then the BLM is closed, so the slew goes away in the winter, and I get it. So it was just a, kind of a try and feel-good, John, maybe catch you in a good mood when you go, you know, if I added five more thousand, I could probably do something really cool here, and we'd all be happy. It's not enough to throw it out, it's just not. And I understand the annexation fees and the taxes, that comes no matter what the deal is. If you come in and we want you to come in, it's a good deal for everybody. It helps the city, it gives taxes, you guys do great stuff, you always do, everything's clean and bitchin'. So that's why I was just trying to get, that little 100 feet there would be so, it would make me feel much better and, and maybe nobody else. But, so that's kind of where I was going with that. But again, not enough to throw the baby out, so.
I guess, and two, is there, there are some annexation fees that are going to come with this. It could very well be the council works with our parks folks and that we can use some of those annexation fees to improve that, that piece of property there, along with the, we, because that $13,000 could be used to go to improve that, as well as some of those annexation fees. Is that, Troy, is that appropriate use of annexation fees to improve that? I know we're not going to discuss that tonight, but is that a possibility?
Yes, council can direct us. We've not anticipated any annexation fees from this project in the budget for next year.
So there, there will be some annexation fees that can be used to improve that site that are, that are not budgeted right now. This is, this is new revenue that we can use towards dedicating it towards that site, which would be good. Dan?
Well, just to give my historical perspective, and Ron mentioned, when we voted on this one time before, actually, when I got to vote on it was in the '94, '95 process, and that was to, should we allow the city boundaries to go beyond the river at all? And I voted against that, I think Ron did, because at that point in time, it seemed like the river, if you're ever going to have a, kind of a natural, logical barrier, the river was probably it, and the concern about the people who were out beyond there, I think, were valid concerns. However, it, you know, down the road, it got approved to be annexed, and like Woody, actually, I drove out this weekend, I had not been there for some time. We used to have a boat next door, and when it was Brooks Marina, and, you know, I was tremendously impressed with the improvements and, and the change in that, and, and I think that that, I mean, it has value to have that in the city, as I mentioned, you know, with what they've already done. I, I also look at it as a very unique situation, like the person mentioned about the, you know, this is a very rare situation where they own the land, you know, under the water versus the state owning that. So I don't think there would be a lot of precedence, and at least from my point of view, as somebody who was born and raised here and all of that, too, if I had to pick between, and actually, I do get to pick, between the, you know, the value of that waterway access, which is so unique, versus, you know, some kind of land access that, as I understand, might not even be guaranteed to be open to the public. I, I think this is a, kind of a rare opportunity for water access that we don't ordinarily get. So I'm, you know, I guess just to say, I'm supportive of this. I understand the concerns, and I have friends that, you know, have given input, and, you know, having to balance everything, you know, and not looking at 10 years ago. I mean, I've got to decide with what we have right here, and meeting the conditions, meeting the requirements, and I think they do so.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Woody, I'm going to try to guess, but I think you were talking about the river. And we do annexations, we just did one, I think, last time. And it was just a chunk of property, and we didn't say, you know, hey, what are we getting out of this? Because it was, you know, R8, it'd be a bunch of houses, another road, whatever, no parks, no trees. We didn't say anything about it. This is the river. I think that's what Roger was trying to say. This is the river. We made a big deal about the other mill sites and river access because people wanted that. And this time, it's like, well, unless you're a kayaker or Jesus, you're not going to use the open space. So, you know, it's just going to be whatever it is.
Ron?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve A-4-16.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second?
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Dan?
Oh, excuse me. We'll go to Amy.
Go to Amy.
Um, I just, again, I'm still hung up on the bike-pet easement and vacating that. And I, maybe this is a question for staff, I don't know who the question would be for, that we're not being short-sighted on any future opportunities by vacating that easement. I don't know of any plans, I realize it doesn't really go anywhere, but I want, I just have that unease.
Mike, maybe if you can come in, up and just show where, where that, that is.
And the question may be appropriate for Monty and how that plays in as well. I'll let you guys fight over the answer.
Let me get a better map.
Good.
That pet-bike easement is directly located here.
It's over the water easement, right?
It's not over water, it's on land.
The water easement for water.
Yes, it is, that is correct. Okay, so this, this property we already own, and I believe the easement goes to here, and as was stated earlier, where it ends, you can't really connect it. I went out there today myself to, to look at it. I know 10 years ago, there was some, the pet-bike committee had wanted a 10-foot trail around the whole island. Couple nights ago, the pet-bike committee, without seeing it, also wanted a trail around the island. Looking at the map now, you, there's nowhere to put a trail around the island, it's all, it's all asphalt. At best, you could go around this little area here, and I don't know how valuable that would be. In my mind, if this was ever developed as like condo or hotel, it could be addressed at that time, not even necessarily a trail, maybe just a bike racks, because you can ride down the road to get there. You don't, you don't have to have a facility, because bikes can use the road as well. My, my main concern is this area here, someday, if we do ever get the pie-in-the-sky pedestrian bridge, or if we get pedestrian bridge under the current 95 bridge, and we do get bike access out to the island, just getting to this area here would be a great start. You can ride your bike through any roads that are out there already, that's not going to stop you. You can ride all the way down to Cedars on your bike right now. I'd be more concerned in the future with if this ever gets developed, getting trails back up the river that way.
Thank you, that was extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I've, I've been to Cedars recently. It's great. It's awesome. You guys did a great job fixing that thing up. And the whole island looks awesome. It really does, if you've been out there. Excellent. I don't have any problem with any of this. Even the, PUDs are a hang-up for me. I don't like PUDs, because by approving an annexation, we approve a PUD, we don't see it. We vote on something we don't see. I don't like that. I don't like it when Congress votes on something they don't see, I don't like it when we do it. But thank you, Mr. Barlow, for bringing most of the PUD out. You brought up all the points. I don't have any issue with that. It's the water. It's, if it was all C-17, and I don't know, Ron, if you want to, we can modify it now, we are the council, and we could change it so that the entire area here, this part, is all C-17. And if, if that was the case, then I'd be okay with having open space on the C-17. It's still weird because it's on water, but it wouldn't be the navigable waterway zone, which I believe automatically allows public access. So that's my sticking point with the entire thing.
Let me just, let me just add to the motion to approve this, and then also to make necessary findings in order and to direct staff to negotiate an annexation agreement. So maybe that would work with you, what you're talking about.
Well, because it's still, it's still doing the, the, the whole, the thing's a big enchilada right now. And so, because we're, we're not only dealing with the subject property up there, but the city decided to piggyback on our big chunk, which is the navigable waterway in the river, and also, you know, out into the lake. So, I mean, you know, it's, it's bigger than, than just the project, which I guess they just did out of convenience, so.
Well, as Dan, as Dan mentioned, him and myself, some years back, voted against this, but I think, as I mentioned earlier, it's a different presentation, and I think it's a great presentation. I think it's a, it's a good thing for the city of Coeur d'Alene. We're going to get some tax money, and, you know, sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we don't. But I think this, to pass this would be a, a great benefit to the city of Coeur d'Alene and the taxpayers. So I call for the question.
Okay, well, it's Kiki that you, let's, let's have Kiki get...
I only had two comments. One is that I'm bringing up the open space over the waterway as just being concerned that it ends up being kind of a trade-off that's like the Belle Reve open space, that nobody knows it's there. And so I think it's a great benefit to the community, but if nobody knows it's there or how to, how to access it, and, and so that, that was kind of a concern that I think's just going to have to...
just going to have to work itself out. And the other thing I really had concerns with is, is giving up this waiver into the shoreline ordinance area with this unknown boat stacking product, which I appreciate the comments that it's just unknown to this community and the waterways within this community. And so I feel uncomfortable about that, and I'm going to have to defer to our quality staff when this building permit process comes through, that all of the agencies, including EPA and Department of Lands and, and the rest, are, are involved in making sure that we don't create a hazard there. And that's my, that was my, that was my concern about protecting the land and protecting the water and the, and the community surrounding it, so.
Call for a question.
So Amy, could you, could you repeat the, what the motion that we have? Do you have that down? The original one?
Motion by Ettinger, seconded by English, to approve/deny the A-416 Marina Yacht Club LLC located at 1,000 North Marina Drive for a proposed annexation and zone request from County Commercial to C, City C-17, to make the necessary findings in order and to direct staff to negotiate an annexation agreement.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second to approve. Is that correct, Ron?
That's right.
Okay. So roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank everyone for their, all their work on that. Troy, you still with us? So we'll move now to Council Bill Number 16-1021, Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year 2015-2016.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could take a minute to clear the room?
Congratulations, Mayor and council, this is your last meeting of the fiscal year. I would like to make comment-
Could I just ask people to just keep it down? We're continuing the meeting.
That you've approved an amendment to a budget that's not in place. That'd be the first time I've ever witnessed that. So we have amended the budget that's not even in place yet. So let's square the one up that we are currently in, and share with you that we're going to move this particular year by $2.6 million. Fairly awesome year, again, as you oversee everything that's going on. We're going to show you what increases we have and the balancing that we've done. You looked at this a month ago. These are expenditures that we have moved due to all the actions. You have touched all of these. Police Department had grants of over $392,000 this particular year. That $102,000 will take care of the space that will go into the public safety building going in between, behind the street shop and behind the police department. I crimp income and things that came in so that we could go ahead and do everything that we have looked at this year. So again, $2,45,465 in the general fund.
If you go back to the other slide? Thank you. Okay, it's not matching up with what I have here.
The 2.6?
Oh, wait, it's, it's, I'm, I'm like three slides behind you.
Okay. So then you have a number of other funds in your $88 million package this year, transfer from the police, impact fees that will take care of the office space, $102,000, Seltice Way project moving, Government Way project, a little additional funds, Ironwood, large project going on, $630,000 we have dedicated to that, Seltice Way, and we moved some money out of the Kathleen Rewidening. That will be done as the state comes forward and does the 95 projects. We'd anticipated widening that between Government Way, we have moved that money back so that we can partner with the state as they've received that grant. That'll be the next big project coming forward. We're finishing up-
Troy, is that the only money you think that's going to impact us on the Highway 95 ITD program?
Pardon?
Do you think that'll be all that's impacted us on the 95 ITD?
I do not.
More to come?
More to come.
Okay.
Cemetery, we've finished that fence, thanks to administration, and shared parking with Cootney County Project. So again, not many governmental entities, except for local government, balances their budget before the end of the fiscal year, and we are pleased to have done that. Vani Jensen is responsible for 99% of all of this movement of these funds. Our goal is to have enough dollars to get everything done that you direct us to do. This is a public hearing. Vani would really like to speak at this public hearing and tell you how many hours we've put into this. I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Troy? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Troy, the one slide I was looking at was revenue increases for the general fund. When you list the fund balance increase of $774,000 and change, is that, that's income that was added to the fund balance?
It is not, sir. That is money we've taken from your fund balance-
That's what I was afraid of.
-to square your budget up. We will give you a better idea in about 30 days or so of any increases to the fund balance for this fiscal year. We've been projecting throughout your budget process that we don't see it growing a whole bunch, but there's a lot of things that'll settle out here as this month ends and the fiscal year begins October 1.
So if I understand the math correctly, so in order to make our budget balance at the end of the year, we had to take $774,000 in savings?
Correct.
That's not sustainable.
Some of these dollars were dedicated in there for projects that we carried forward.
Okay.
So that will be, we probably will not move your fund balance down by that dollar amount. We'd already anticipated, that should have been spent the year before, it didn't get spent, we carry it forward, we don't reappropriate. You said go, we didn't quite get it done in that fiscal year.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
Any other questions for Troy? So we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass the first reading of Council Bill Number 16-1021.
Second. Motion in a second? Any further discussion? Amy, if you could read the title, please.
An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 3514, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, appropriating the sum of $88,000, $88,621,90, which sum includes additional monies received by the city of Coeur d'Alene, in the sum of $2,671,865, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance, and providing an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Suspend rules?
Second. Motion in a second to suspend the rules? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to, and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.